Call to order. The virtual meeting of city council for May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Clerk, first, we're gonna say the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please rise. See after me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Cochi?
Here.
Thanks.
Here.
Before we go to the minutes, Mike, you want to give out our email for contacting for the hearing of the citizens part?
Yes, anybody that for any questions or comments can send those to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. That's citymanager@bedfordoh.gov.
Good. And council, you have the minutes of the work session of May fourth, two thousand and twenty. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, could I have a motion for acceptance? By Heather Rhodes, second by Vic. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And council, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May fourth, two thousand and twenty. Any corrections or changes to that? Seeing none, could I have a motion for acceptance by Miesak, second by Spinks? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Under old business, resolution number twenty-five forty-eight dash twenty. A resolution declaring the necessity to improve certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio, by lighting the same and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension, please. By Rhodes, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
We just have a little technical issue with our city hall. Whoops, it's all done, gone. I have a motion for third and final. By Spinks, second by Rhodes, Miesak?
I'll take that. The resolutions and ordinances A through F this evening are all related to our two thousand and twenty-one tax and budget and tax budget. A couple of highlights in regards to all this, so I could address that right now. We won't have to repeat ourselves. The street lighting will drop from one point six mils to one point five mils. And that's what we're voting on tonight, as well as the levying for assessment of refuse fees will remain at the fourteen dollars per month. So I ask council to approve all the resolutions and ordinances A through F. We also will be able to collect our advances in advance for the taxes. And when we get to the tax budget, the three reasons are to allow them to authorize their property tax rates and to receive local government funds and to establish our certificate estimated resources, which is the total amount that we could spend up to when we start looking at our budget of two thousand and twenty-one. So I ask council to look favorably on A through F this evening. And if you have any questions as we go through, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-seven seventy-eight dash twenty. An ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio, by lighting the same and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension. A Rhodes, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final. By Saunders, second by Lou Hardy. And Frank already explained all these, so call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-seven seventy-nine dash twenty. Being an ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of the street and public places of the city of Bedford, Ohio, by lighting up the same in accordance with resolution number twenty-five forty-eight dash twenty and ordinance number ninety-seven seventy-eight dash twenty and declaring an emergency. And I would ask for a suspension. By Rhodes, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety-seven. Pardon?
Third.
Oh, we had the third. I'm getting ahead of myself. Hey, yeah, motion for, do we have a motion for that?
No.
Okay, we need a motion for third and final. By Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, now ninety-seven eighty dash twenty. An ordinance to levy assessments for the expense of garbage refuge collection, recycling and disposal within the city of Bedford, Ohio during the tax year two thousand and twenty and collected in two thousand and twenty-one and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension. By Spinks, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final. By Miesak, second by Lou Hardy. This is for the, Mike, you want to take that?
Actually, that's the refuse fee. That's fourteen dollars. It'll remain the same for this year as next year.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
No.
Cochi?
Yes.
And Spinks?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-five forty-nine dash twenty. A resolution approving and accepting the proposed two thousand and twenty tax budget for the year January first, two thousand and twenty-one to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension. By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final. By Saunders, second by Rhodes. Frank, I know you touched on it, you want to?
We addressed that earlier. Basically, the three reasons why the tax budget's passed to allow property tax rates established, getting the local government funds, whereas this year with federal dollars being distributed based on that, that becomes important. And also with the certificate estimated resources being established for our city for the maximum amount of dollars that will be allowed to be appropriated and spent for next year.
Thank you. Any questions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Did I mess this up again? That was twenty-five fifty, correct?
Twenty-five forty-nine. We're on twenty-five fifty now.
Oh, okay, I got it. Resolution number twenty-five fifty dash twenty. Being a resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of tax levies for the year two thousand and twenty collected in two thousand and twenty-one pursuant to section three twenty-one point thirty-four of the revised code of the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency. You can have a motion for suspension. By Lou Hardy, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final. By Spinks, second by Janutus. And Frank?
Yeah, this resolution is to allow the county fiscal officer, as they collect the tax dollars, to distribute those to the city of Bedford early versus waiting till the final collection process. Gives us a couple of extra months of cash flow and to our benefit. So I ask council to pass that this evening.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Are we done with that one? Go to ordinance number ninety-seven eighty-six dash twenty. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a proposal with the GPD group for professional engineering services for sanitary sewer flow metering and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension. By Miesak, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final. By Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. And Mike?
Thank you, Stan. This, these, this fee or this contract is obviously above and beyond our normal contract with GPD. We are required, when I say we, the city, we are required to prepare a no feasible alternative analysis for the EPA that was part of our renewal permit. And that NFA analysis is in regards to rainfall derived inflow and infiltration to our plant at the wastewater. What that this analysis entails is the installation of twenty-plus meters throughout the city that will analyze and obviously attract data or compile data during heavy rainfalls. Obviously, now is the perfect time to get these installed. We did reach out to see if we can research obtaining additional quotes for these flow meters. And we did provide, we did find two consultants that provide a similar service. One of them was MS Consultants and the other is ACOM. MS Consultants just started providing this service with the meters in two thousand and nineteen. They only own twenty of them. And obvious, and obviously aren't able to provide what we need to do. ACOM has over a hundred and fifty and they work in various states. Instead of hiring ACOM, actually working with GPD, we would secure a lower rate. And it's our recommendation that we continue to plan to go with GPD.
Mike, you're, we're losing you again. Mike?
Sorry, can you give me a thumbs down if it doesn't work?
We're trying.
Sorry. So obviously, it's the administration's recommendation that we go with GPD. It would be a lower rate than going with ACOM directly. And we'd like to get these meters installed sooner than later, especially during the rainy season, so we can get the best data possible. And we can include that in our NFA analysis. That's going to help us determine not only five-year, but a ten-year plan for wastewater improvements.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to reports. And Mr. City Manager, Mike?
Thank you, Stan. And again, if I cut out, I apologize. Just give me the thumbs down. First off, I want to thank the Bedford Garden Club. They had sent, I believe it actually came to Mayor Cochi and myself for the generous donation to, my screen just went blank.
Are we still hearing you?
Okay, I don't know what's going on. Okay. I just want to thank the Garden Club for the generous donation. For, we utilize and purchase flowers. Some of those are going on the Union Street Bridge and they were installed today, so thank you. I wanted to provide a friendly reminder that our annual shred day is still taking place on May thirtieth. But again, there's going to be some restrictions. For those that plan on coming, please place your items in the trunk. You will not be allowed to exit your vehicle. And only the representatives from the company will be able to get that stuff out of your trunk to shred. So bear with us, but we are still having the shred day. Quick announcement that the Sunoco, that long project, they finally opened at Turney and Lilly and Mazda Bedford is open. They moved in over the weekend and they are open today. So two good projects that came to completion. Our staff has been busy. We've applied for various grants. Recreation Department applied for a grant through AARP for improvements to the center and programming. Jennifer Kuzma applied for a large grant through the Office of Criminal Justice Services for future cleaning supplies, cleaning services, and a lot of other items that we can possibly utilize in trying to keep obviously our facilities and staff but the public healthy and safe. So we've been extremely busy with this. If, quick update on the Illuminating Company. They are starting a project in Bedford. It's not citywide yet, but they're starting in certain pods. And they're going to be installing what they call smart meters. So for those of you that are getting mailings, you will receive a mailing. They're taking all the necessary safety precautions. But look for that information to be going out. And you can coordinate the install of those meters later this year. Again, we are, as of right now, we are still closed, but our city hall is tentatively scheduled to reopen on June first. And look for more information that will be coming out later this week and beginning of next week regarding some services that we provide, some modifications to those certified, modifications to the services and some other items. That will be going out on our website and social media outlets. So again, bear with us. We appreciate the cooperation. And continue to practice social distancing. And hopefully, we are back to somewhat of a normal in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Law Director, John?
Say hello to everybody, but I also wanted to let you know that the courts are now starting to reopen. Not at full capacity, but we are back to pretty normal. And they are taking precautions to keep everyone safe as well as we will be. But the, so the courts are up and running and the police are out there trolling, trying to keep us safe. So be safe, everybody. Be healthy. End of report.
Thank you. And Mike, we have your picture back.
Thanks.
Finance Director, Frank?
Yes, just a couple of items. One, just a reminder to keep filing on the tax returns. Keep those coming. Deadline's July fifteenth. Another item, as I'll address it ahead of time, is the Uniform Guidance Cost Principles that we'll be talking about and looking to pass this evening in line with the federal grants that we receive. There's codes of federal regulations that are requirements of having us keeping policies in line with federal dollars and how to spend those federal dollars versus our own dollars. So we have policies in regards to that we're passing tonight to comply with the federal regulations and their requirements. So I'll be asking council to look favorably on that resolution twenty-five. I believe it's forty-nine or fifty-one, under the Uniform Guidance Cost Principles. That's the end of my report this evening.
Thank you. And council reports. We will start with Mr. Janutus.
Oh, thank you. I just want to hope, I just want to extend my wishes that everyone is well and stay safe. And of course, I'm very looking forward to when we could resume meeting again personally. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy?
Yes, I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. And also, Mike, I would like to ask, have you had any reports from Villa Hearts or Woodside with our retirement establishments? Anybody come down with any of this virus?
I have not heard of any positive cases. We have, as part of our program, we have had our police department reach out to all of our assisted living facilities regularly to check in to see if they need anything from us, any type of assistance that we could provide them. They, for one, they appreciated the city reaching out and being there and just that, that knowing they can rely on us or in need. That went over a long way and our police has continued that communication. But they have not, from what we've gathered, we have not been notified of any positive cases to the residents. And obviously, if we would hear otherwise, I would update council.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. And also with, in my ward, I want to thank a lot of the people cutting their grasses. It's been pretty good this year so far. So everybody just keep it up and we get some dry days here, we got to catch up again. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Miesak?
Oh, good evening, everybody. It's kind of hard to see you, but I'm glad we're here together. And Mike kind of rolled on my thunder already about the new pump in Sunoco dealership. I guess it's a dollar seventy-nine there and they're starting to line up, so the pumps are starting to become busy. I wanted to say congratulations to the two thousand and twenty class, senior class of Bedford High School. We enjoyed the parade by the students and made a lot of people come to their windows or their front porches that afternoon. And it was quite entertaining and I hope that we can do more of these things just to let everybody know that we still care about each other and our city's alive and thriving. I observed it Friday afternoon when we had the van lifted on a few of the merchants in the downtown area. I was down there for about two and a half hours. And the stores were bustling. They were busy. The traffic was good. I know the crosswalk doesn't have any respect in front of US Bank, but someday the people get trained and they will do the right thing before something happens, which we hope never does happen. I do have a question or two from Mike, since you had visited my new merchant down the street. What is going on with Big and Little? Do we have any idea what is going there besides a grill or something? And also, at Colony Club, there was a problem when we had the first big rains last week of a couple of the townhouses there getting water and actually wastewater coming into their apartments. Tried to bring it up to management, but had no cooperation.
Yeah, I am, the, the, I, forgive me if I did not, I thought I included it in a memo. I may not have. The Big and Little just recently received the okay to open from the Board of Health. So that should be imminent. And it's going to kind of be like a convenient like it was before. So that should be in the very near future. They did a lot of work on the building. I've met the owners, very nice people. So we look forward to that. And as far as Colony Club, I did not speak to anybody from management. I know Sean checked some of the areas over the weekend with the water. Obviously, it was significant. We know that. It was a flash flood warning. It was over about a two and a half. Friday and Saturday, we received about three point five eight inches of rainwater, which was significant. Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. One more question or one more request, and this is, I'm going to support Victor. Your Watchboard Road of Union Street, let's see if we can get some money to take care of that one too this year.
Sure.
There it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Thank you. Hello, everyone out there. Thank you for joining us. I'm looking at my statistics right now. I see that there are fifteen of you out there watching us live. Thank you very much for joining us. I know last council meeting, we had a hundred and thirty-seven people view, which I believe you record. Thank you so much for tuning in. And I would like to point out that if you go down below the screen, there is a subscribe button and you can click on that button and YouTube will let you know when these videos pop up. And right now, we're at eighty subscribers. I'd love to see that get over a hundred. And I hope that you continue to, to join us for these meetings. Even when we go back to our council chambers, know that these videos will be there and that you can continue watching them from the comfort of your home. You don't have to come to city hall. My next item, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Garden Club is putting on their sale this year, but we're doing it online. It has wrapped up in terms of you get to pick exactly what you want. We have some leftovers that are still on the website. You can go to, let's see if I can get it to register. You can go to bedfordgardenclub.com/plants-sale. And that will take you to our online sale. We are also selling Girl Scout cookies. Having a local troop here. Uh, we are also selling Girl Scout cookies. Uh, we have a, a, a local troop here that had bought a significant number of cookies to do this and, uh, COVID shut everything down right before cookie season. So, uh, they had extra cookies. We're helping them sell those cookies. Unable to get your cookie fixed. We have cookies left. Please go to the website and purchase them. Uh, uh, the Garden Club would like everyone to know that gardening is not canceled. Garden. So, so go to the website. Uh, we, what will happen is if you place an order with us, uh, on the online plant sale, uh, next Friday and Saturday, we'll deliver those plants to you, uh, to your home. We will leave them on your driveway or your porch and we will be, uh, and you don't have to, uh, you can choose to pay online or you can choose to pay us, uh, when the plants are delivered. We will contact you to arrange, uh, transfer of payment, uh, so that you don't have to come in contact with anyone that's delivering. Uh, for the Bedford Downtown Alliance, uh, we are working on, uh, unfortunately our traditional Memorial Day Parade was canceled. Uh, we're very much looking forward to the traditional, uh, Memorial Day Parade next year. Uh, this year though, Bedford Downtown Alliance wanted to be able to honor our, uh, our, our fallen soldiers in, in a way that everyone can participate. Uh, so we are creating a virtual, uh, Memorial Day Parade. Currently you can sign up for, uh, a slot where, uh, one of our videographer, a videographer, not one of, our videographer will videotape a message from you and add it to that parade. Uh, if you don't feel comfortable coming out, it is outdoors. We're doing it at the gazebo. Uh, we are scheduling so that we can maintain social distancing. Uh, if you don't feel comfortable even then, you can still send a, a video message to stories@BedfordDowntown.org. Uh, and that, uh, that will be added to the, and we're hoping to have that, uh, available, uh, Friday evening, Saturday morning, so that you have all Memorial Day weekend to, uh, to take a look. So we've come up with some fun stuff to put in there. We're not fun, uh, it's, um, interesting things. Uh, we found some interesting, uh, references to, uh, you know, for, uh, the memorials and that kind of thing that we're going to be including. For the first Fridays, uh, we will be having our next first Friday, but not in person. Uh, we have, we are, are going to be hiring a DJ who will be doing a Zoom, uh, dance party. Uh, my son participated in one of these for his school. Uh, we had a lot of fun. Um, typically they could take up to 500, uh, different, uh, people into a party. Everybody's at home. Uh, we all dance at home. We all see each other. We play games. Uh, it's a lot of fun. Uh, we will also be offering, uh, we are working on trying to offer drive-by meals so that, uh, you know, uh, during our traditional first Fridays, you can come and get a burger or get a hot dog, a bag of chips, a drink and, uh, and enjoy the fun. Uh, what we're going to be offering is a drive-by where you can pick up, uh, you know, a couple of stacked lunches or stacked dinners to take home, uh, to your family and enjoy our, our dance party. With the same thing, um, the downtown businesses are reopening. So please visit your downtown businesses. Uh, they are taking precautions. They are doing all kinds of things to, uh, to keep you safe. Uh, and but they need you to shop with them. Uh, this time period has been particularly difficult for our small businesses here in Bedford. Uh, you know, they, they aren't like your chains where they can, they can survive something like this. They need your patronage and they need it now. So think about what you can, uh, go down there and, and patronize. Uh, if you had not heard, and it's been the talk of the town, uh, we actually just had a wine boutique open up in downtown and it is a very nice place. And yes, I mean, you can go in, you can go tasting, you can buy wine, uh, and they also, uh, host private parties. So, uh, if you're interested, check it out. It's, it's an excellent place. I was there. I enjoyed it. Last but not least, uh, we have, we have a, um, need for volunteers at Bedford Downtown Alliance. I know that the world has been turned upside down and everybody's kind of, uh, discombobulated, uh, but it's, it's the time that we started to come back to, uh, building things that make us a community and that means volunteering. We have several projects for the Bedford Downtown Alliance that need volunteers that don't need you to come here. Uh, we, uh, need to create a, a map brochure of our downtown. We want to create a walking tour that people can do, uh, you know, socially distanced, uh, those type of things. We need volunteers for that. To go, uh, I think my green screen is going to keep it from going, but I'll bring it next time. And, uh, if you're interested in volunteering, please contact me, um, at either Heather@BedfordWard5, the number five.com or at my phone number 440-227-3620. Uh, and that's all for me. Thank you again for joining us and, uh, I hopefully, um, I will be seeing you soon, um, and maybe from six feet away. So.
Thank you. That's a lot of stuff. It's still a lot of fun stuff to do. Mr. Saunders.
All right. Uh, first off, anybody watching the videos tonight, and if it looks like I'm staring at the ceiling, it's because I have the, uh, the zoom up on my, uh, smart TV, which of course is hanging higher than, uh, I'm sitting. So it does look like I'm, uh, staring at the ceiling. But, uh, I got a couple of items that, uh, of interest that have come up in the last week, partly because of the weather. And Mike, have we really ever televised or figured out what the heck's going on at Lincoln and Columbus? Cause that manhole's been a geyser for almost a week now. It's got the holes in the lid. Thank God. Otherwise it'd blow the lid like a tiddlywink. But, uh, uh, it's been geysering out every rain we get. It, it, the sewer obviously can't, uh, hold it. I know a couple of years ago, we found a break in that pipe, uh, down by Johnson, but, uh, it, it, it's really getting bad. We're going to have to do something with that. Is he here? I don't hear him.
Mike, you get that?
I think he's frozen again.
Mike, Mike.
Mike. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
There he is. I'm pressed up against the window. Sorry. Um, yeah, done. I, I know they were back out there, I think today, cause they were aware of it. We did televise it last year. Um, but I'm looking, I'm waiting for some more data on that. So I'll let you know.
All right. Uh, another thing, a couple of years ago, the retaining wall fell down, uh, behind B-Dry. And that retaining wall used to hold all the water from the parking lot from coming into the backyards on Lincoln through that area. Well, you can imagine where that water's been going since we've had such a large amount coming through. Nobody's ever enforced putting that wall back up to hold that water to push it out towards Northfield Road. Is there a way we can get the building department to get some compliance on that? Cause it's been a couple of years now and let's face it, this last week, week and a half has been unusual. And these people on Lincoln, their backyards are lakes.
I'll, I'll look into that. I'm not familiar with that, but I can look into that, that property.
Okay. Well, there should be, there should be a record somewhere in the building department from a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Well, and then another quick thing, uh, how are we doing in the way of complying with the federal regulations for all our road signs and our street nameplates having to reflect backgrounds and then capital and small letters? Because there is a deadline on that, although it was extended. Are, are we working on that or are we just ignoring it? Cause it could jeopardize federal funds in the future.
No, we don't. We, we, we're not ignoring it. We're not ignoring it. I can't remember the deadline to when it's extended, but I can provide that. I can get that for you.
All right. I just don't want us to get caught. So, cause a lot of communities already started complying and we seem to still be in stall mode on that. So I'm sure we're working on it. I just want to make a reminder that, uh, that, that we're going to have to do that. And, uh, another quick note, are we going to let the VFW decorate the square and the cemetery for Memorial Day? Even though the parade has been closed, they still want to decorate both of them.
I have shared with the, them about two weeks ago, week and a half ago, uh, they were intending on placing the flowers out at the gravestones and decorating on Friday. Um, so anybody that was going out throughout the Memorial Day weekend, um, if it's Saturday, Sunday, or even Monday, that the graves would be decorated. And then we, we, we told them they can do that. Obviously, you know, there's only going to be a few of them. Um, we can't have or promote gatherings on the square. That can't happen. Uh, but they are decorating it, um, I believe on Friday.
All right. Thank you for on that one. And then the last thing, you may have noticed that I voted no on the garbage fee and I do this every year because I think it's an unfair fee because we have people like seniors, for instance, that have the smaller cans and they're lucky to have a half a can every two weeks. And then we've got other people who put out an, on average of four, five cans a week. And it's unfair for those to supplement those that are heavily using, uh, the system. And I think there should be a better way of how we determine the fee, uh, because it's just not fair for those that, uh, end up not having that much garbage and others that are just really abusing it, which of course brings us back to the Woodrow House that for three weeks has had nothing but trash out. So I hope something's being done with that one. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Hello, everybody. Hope everybody is well and safe. Um, happy Memorial Day weekend. Um, I just want to thank Heather, um, for coming up with this virtual Memorial Day service because, um, I think it's just very important for our cities to still do something for that day. And I think that's a great way of, uh, doing a tribute, remembering ones that sacrificed so much for our country. So, uh, thank you, Heather, for doing that and, uh, for the Downtown Alliance. Um, cause I think it means a lot, um, to families that have people that, uh, perished in that.
We had many volunteers who helped with that. I want to make that clear. They, they're, they're doing a fabulous job.
I think it's great. I think it's great. And, uh, thanks, Mike, to you too, for what all you're doing to keep our city safe as well. Um, Service Department, Police Department, everybody, all the employees that are following to, uh, make this a, a very safe transaction for when we do open up. Um, with that being said, talking about opening up, I had the honor of being at the Mazda, our brand new, uh, top of the line, uh, Mazda dealership, um, this morning. And, um, of course it was so funny still walking in and everybody's in mask and, um, some of the salesmen, um, were, had their masks matched their suits and stuff. So I thought that was very nice. But, uh, big thank you to Mazda. Um, it just gives me hope for that corner, for that whole corridor of coming into our city from Rockside. And, um, thanks to each and every one of them that, um, did that. That, that was a big leap and a lot of money spent, but, uh, that's a class act, uh, agent. Like I said, it gives a little bit of hope there for drawing other businesses to come in that area now because who would not want to? I mean, it's really nice. And, um, a big shout out to, uh, uh, my buddy, they buried. It's also working very hard, uh, at the YMCA. I took a little tour there too. And, um, it's a mess right now, but, uh, big plans and I can't wait for that to be coming in. Today is National Museum Day and kind of sad that our own beautiful historical society museum is, uh, due to the coronavirus is not open yet. We will be, um, there are employees are there on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So if you have questions, you will, can call, but right now they're not open to the public. Um, our strawberry festival, which would have been June and a couple of weeks, the second weekend in June has been canceled. But what we've tried, decided to do, cause that's one of our big fundraisers, we've had to cancel our big fundraiser that was in March, our reverse raffle that's always, uh, uh, very successful. So what we've done is we're going to combine the strawberry festival and the Celebration of Art Weekend of the Puka, and it's going to be called Celebration of Art and Strawberries. So there'll be artists there. There'll be the strawberry tent and that is going to be the second weekend, um, in September, hoping that, you know, we're able to do that. We're planning that if you're interested in having a space. Um, a lot of the vendors from the strawberries, uh, festival will be there. The artists, uh, from the, um, celebration art will be there. So it's going to be a collaboration. There won't be the bouncy houses, but there'll still be, it'll be, um, it's just a celebration and it's so important. Um, our historical society, that museum is very, that's, I mean, that's part of our downtown, our beautiful historic downtown. So if you're not a member, it's just like the garden club. It's so inexpensive to be a member. Those are two things that are really important for our city. Uh, thank you to the garden club for donations for the flyers. It's, you know, again, another corridor into our city. Um, but it's very important to do that. Um, Mike, I do have a question for you, uh, do you have something for you? Um, the big trucks, the big car haulers are still coming down, um, Grand Boulevard. I've been getting quite a few complaints. Um, and it's not, it's the big ones. It's not the ones that, that be like an Amazon, they'd be dropping off a car to someone. It's the big ones. And the other trucks are still cutting through and I've got a couple of complaints even on Willard, um, with the big trucks coming through. Um, also this car speeding, Willard and Grant. I mean, it's like these stop signs mean nothing. We've got four stop signs on Grand and they mean nothing to people. They, they don't stop. Some of them don't even attempt to slow down. Um, so, um, also this, uh, yesterday with all the rain, the heavy rain that came so quick, um, the creeks behind Crestwell got pretty scary high. I don't know if you got any calls from anybody. Um, Mike, I saw, I didn't get any calls, but I saw posted when I was out doing my little, uh, uh, ward check. It was, it's pretty hot. I know that that's part of their property, but over the years it's just been getting worse and worse and the, with the weather being a little wonky right now. Um, did you get any calls?
No, we, we had, we only received, uh, we had five calls, um, in regarding flooding. I didn't get any about the creek on Crestwell. Um, but yeah.
And for my last thing, some very exciting news. And Vic, I don't know if you know this, Mills on Wheels got a $10,000 grant from the Mills on Wheels America Foundation. So we're so excited. We needed that. We had a private donor. Thank you, Mike. Um, they gave us a little bit because we're providing now mills for 122 clients. Excuse me, 118 clients. This time last year we had 80 clients and, um, we serve Bedford, Bedford Heights, Oakwood, and there's another, what am I, Walton Hills, Walton Hills. So, um, thank you. We're, we're good on volunteers right now because we're only delivering, uh, once a week. And so what we're doing is we're delivering several mills. Um, Vic, thank you. Cause, uh, poor Vic, he comes out with a whole big, uh, buggy full of, uh, all kinds of boxes. He, he does the strong arming stuff. We're also going after another grant for Mills on Wheels because we have our clients, some of our clients have animals and you don't think about that. And also, you know, food for animals and pets and different things. So we're going after another grant to help out some of our clients with, uh, pets and also safe, South Haven, their, uh, hunger, the hunger center is hopefully going to be opened back up June 2nd. And they're going to be doing something like that too. Where we're going to be able to help some of these residents, um, that are not working right now that, uh, have pets. And I know they're working with some of the local veterinarians and stuff to help out with some of that. So, um, happy Memorial Day. Stay safe. Um, end of report.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. Uh, again, I want to wish a happy, I don't know if that's the correct term, Memorial Day to all our veterans out there, uh, especially the, uh, World War II vets and the Korean War vets, uh, as they're getting older and old and, uh, some of them are passing on, such as my dad did a couple of years ago. But I think about, uh, what, what they did. what, what they did, what Memorial Day means to us. That these men and women that are laying down at the cemetery, that sacrifice all so we could sit and do what we're doing today. And my heart goes out to all the, all the veterans. You may have noticed up at Exelia, that they're tearing down the middle building. And it was quite quickly, they tore down that building, and I think they're just going to make a little park in there for the time being. So it's, I see they are doing some active work and they had that in the plans to tear down, so that was interesting to see. And I'm going to harp again on the census. It is vitally important that everybody, everybody fill out their census papers and get that in. The, the information is secure and confidential, so please get it in. It's only 10 questions, takes just a few minutes to fill it out. Because soon, census people are going to be knocking on your doors. We've only had about 50% of our population fill out their census forms. It is mandatory. Again, it's safe, make sure you count everybody that's living in your house. Even if they're not family. If they happen to be staying there for a reason, they are counted. It's so important, because it, it goes back to federal funding we get, money for the schools. It, it determines how many representatives we're going to have in the Congress. All sorts of things that we need to get that information and get it filled out. So if you haven't done it yet, please get it in. Like I say, 10 minutes online and it's done. Simple. And, and please, it's vitally important to our city. And, and one thing I wanted to point out, behind me is the seal of the city of Bedford. So woodcarving, one piece of wood, it was done by a gentleman by the name of Wayne Holzopple, probably 25, 30 years ago. It was on display at our old City Hall. It's just remarkable. If you ever get into City Hall, stop and take a look, this is just a fantastic piece of sculpture. And as we know, that Archibald Willard, who painted The Spirit of '76, was born here in Bedford. And it, it's just a remarkable piece of work. So if you ever get a chance to come around, come and take a look at it, it's, it's really something. And with that, we better get on with business. Ordinance number 9787-20. An ordinance to obtain funding from the state of Ohio pursuant to Senate Bill 310 and declaring this to be an urgent emergency measure. I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Yeah, motion for third and final by Mezak, second by Blue Hardy. Mike, you want to take this one?
Yes, Mayor, this is, as you had mentioned, the state legislature had recently passed a law where they would provide significant dollars to state and local government, or to municipal governments as part of the CARES Act. What they've done is they created a mechanism to distribute these funds, and they're basing it off of the local government mechanism. Now, there's nothing finalized yet, it does not mean we're getting any dollars. But based on the mechanism, we would receive our monthly allocation for what appears to be March, April, and May. And that could equate to about $50,000 to $60,000 that would have to be spent on COVID-related items. Cleaning, supplies, things of that nature. But in order to do that and accept the money, we would have to pass this piece of legislation.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9788-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with CitizenServe for subscriptions, training, and implementation of software, declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes. I think I already did that, didn't I? That's one disadvantage doing this, I don't have our clerk sitting next to me to keep me on track. So anyhow, Michael, you want to take that?
Yes, we are, we are in need of upgrading our building department software. The software later this year is going to be unsupported. And we're working with First Suburbs Consortium and Citizen Serve, who will be able to provide the service. It's all web-based. Our inspectors will be provided tablets. This, these costs are unlimited updates, unlimited support. And I believe it's good for the direction of the department in the long term.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Resolution number 2551-20. A resolution authorizing the city manager and finance director to adopt Uniform Guidance Cost Principles, Audit and Administration Requirements Necessary to Comply with Federal Cost Principles, Internal Controls, Procurement Standards, Program Income Requirements in Obtaining Federal Grants and Declaring an Emergency. Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mezak, second by Blue Hardy.
I'll take that.
Frank?
Yeah. In regards to the federal government receiving all these funds, the federal government has codes of federal regulations that have to be followed by cities and so forth too, when they receive federal funds. And today, we're looking to pass seven different policies that we have updated in line with federal guidelines for federal funds, only our regular funds of the city and all that are not affected. But in regards to federal funds, we have a cash management, conflict of interest, cost principles, internal controls, program income related to federal funds, and time and effort and procurement policies, all being updated in regards to regulations by the federal government and what they require. We'll be also providing these policies to the federal agencies that are granting funds and letting them know that these are our current policies and keeping in line with their regulations as required. So I ask Council to look favorably on this this evening and pass that.
Thank you. And clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Resolution number 2552-20. A resolution authorizing the city manager to sell the 2,000 FL-50 Horton ambulance to Life Care Ambulance, Inc. as surplus property and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Janutus. I have a motion for third and final. Don't, sorry.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Now, motion for third and final.
There you go.
Mezak, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. During the process of purchasing the new squad, which has since been in service, we actually checked to see what the trade-in value would be. That trade-in value for the piece of equipment based on the age was about $12,000 to $15,000. Obviously, we thought it was more valuable. We turned around and Pat Goody and our fire department sent the information out to other municipalities, private companies, and we received the offer of $25,000, which we believe is in line with the value. And I think it's a good deal for, for us to move forward on the sale. And it eliminates us trying to go through a broker and thus lowering our cost that we would get anyways.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Resolution number 2553-20. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a master cooperation agreement between county of Cuyahoga, Ohio, on behalf of the Department of Public Works regarding preventive maintenance services and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension. Saunders, second by Blue Hardy. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This agreement is a standard agreement we've entered into with the county in the past. It is when we utilize them if there is any projects going on or if they need to use specialized equipment that we don't have. Most recently, we utilized the county on sewer cleaning, root cutting, using their jet piece of equipment that comes in. And this is an agreement they require us to enter into.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi? Spinks?
Yes.
Resolution number 2554-20. A resolution authorizing the execution of a mutual aid agreement by the city of Bedford, Cuyahoga County, Ohio, on behalf of the Bedford Police Department, with the Board of Park Commissioners of the Cleveland Metropolitan Park District, on behalf of the Cleveland Metro Parks Police Department, and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension, please. By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is again, a standard agreement, although we've been providing mutual aid for our neighbors, other municipalities, Bedford UH Police Department, and the Metro Parks for, for years. Again, this is just a formality in entering into this agreement. The Metro Parks have requested other municipalities that they either abut to or they have parks within to do a similar agreement. It's nothing we're not doing now.
Right. Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9789-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Burton Scott Contractors LLC for the Forbes Road resurfacing, being the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and declaring an emergency. And I believe it's our wish to put this on a first reading. A motion for such by Rhodes, second by Blue Hardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
And ordinance number 9790-20. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to contract with Chagrin Valley Paving, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension. Or, excuse me, we want to put this on first reading, a motion for first reading. A Saunders, second by Mezak. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Thank you, and now it's time for hearing of citizens. Mike, do we have any emails coming?
We do. More than one.
Okay.
Yay.
I will, I'll read them first and then one of them, a couple of them that we have addressed already. The first comment is from Jim Slifka at 130 Grand Boulevard. He had two questions. One, he was looking to reassure, or if I could reassure the residents of Bedford that Kimball, who's our citywide refuse company, is indeed taking the recycled materials to a center to be sorted and that they're not just be taken to a landfill like it was reported in the news with some other communities. I, I can reassure that those are absolutely being recycled. Not only did we, we knew that, we also reached out for verification from Kimball, they verified it. And for those of you that are wondering, we do get a report on a monthly basis to see how much has been recycled and materials and things like that. So it is verified, that does help, and it lowers our tonnage. So for those of you that are recycling, thank you. And his second comment was speeding on Grand Boulevard. I know Councilwoman Spinks brought that up, and he talked about the workers at some of the auto dealers. I did send a message to Mr. Slifka earlier today, and I had a conversation with our police chief regarding that matter. So we did address both of those items.
Thank you. Anything else?
There was a comment, Tony Boirisma, 45 Tarbell, mentioned- Uh, there was a comment, Tony Boerisma, 45 Tarbell, uh, mentioned this before regarding the shutdown, that uh we would have massive disruptions in the food supply chain. It's a perfect time to start relaxing the restrictions on letting people provide for themselves. Um, let up on gardening restrictions and allowing small livestock in the city and chickens following the guidelines implemented in other communities. Uh, we can come together and move forward as a community. That was simply a, just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Um, Harry Carter, 169 Rayner Drive. Um, he, hello to all of council and city staff. He hopes everyone is staying safe during the pandemic. He had a few questions and he apologized if it was covered at last week's meeting that he missed. Um, one, he asked about the sidewalk program. Um, he heard about it last year, but did not hear of any mention of it recently. Um, he did express some concerns about Nordham, that it was littered with issues with raised sidewalks. It's very hard to walk with a family, um, because a lot of them are raised every two to three houses. Uh, that it's been an issue for years. He tried to contact someone um multiple times, did not hear back. Um, I can answer that, Harry. We, we are, uh, we did conduct our sidewalk program last year was uh first year uh that we started it. Um, we did some areas up on top of the hill. Um, and we're also going to be doing it again this year, although it's not yet determined which walks. Um, those will be done. I will share that with council. Um, but we are intending to do it again this year. Um, he did also talk about um Nordham being in desperate need of road repair. Um, he hands it to the service department for trying their best and putting patches in. Uh, but it gets torn up quickly and it gets worse every year. Uh, if there is a street that needs repair, it is this road. Thank you for your time and he, he hopes everyone stays safe. Um, I, I do know, we talked about Nordham today, Councilman Saunders brought that up. Um, I, it's not in our plans to do this year. Um, I will see where it's in on the yearly list, but I will provide that to council um as far as our uh engineer and our service department's evaluation of the roadways.
Okay.
The, the last, I, I did just receive an email, um, but I don't believe it was intended for the council meeting, but I, I will share it briefly. Um, it is wi- from a Jody Johnson. She lives at 686 Turney Road. Um, she talked about the flooding, um, and some of the issues that she was having over at Colony Club. And she was just looking for some assistance. Uh, Jody, if you are listening, we, um, that was brought up. Councilwoman Mezak brought that up. She actually uh sent me a text message on Saturday and she, she was familiar with it. Um, and we're working to try to get that alleviated. I will reach out to you tomorrow. She did provide her cell phone number. Um, I'm not going to share that, um, but we will communicate. Um, I will communicate with Jody and we'll try to alleviate that. So that's four comments.
All right. Good, good. And no further, I will ask for a motion for a German. Do I have a motion by Spinks, second by Saunders? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you all for listening and, and I hope you have a safe and dry Memorial Day weekend.